Department gets our fiscal year 22 payments situated. We should be in the near future expecting the adjustment for the remainder of the direct care wage increase, which we have not seen yet. But as you can see, we're at last year's amounts, if not slightly above. You can move on to the next slide. So eligibles, you can see still continues to be significantly higher than even last year, which was quite a bit higher than the prior year. So that has a direct impact on our revenue and should continue to look like that as long as the emergency order is in place. This is assets, looking at September versus November. So you can see cash and investments has gone up, receivables has gone down, other assets remains roughly flat, and capital assets continues to decrease over time. Liabilities has gone down since September due to state is close to the same, employee payables again close to the same, and long-term debt again goes down with any payments over So our net position between September and October is roughly flat, not a significant change. Total liabilities have gone down, but our net position has gone up just due to the increase or the reduction in liabilities. So our revenue comparison, this is November over November, so this last fiscal year compared to this fiscal year is up about $4 million. General fund is actually down a bit. County funds remain flat, and all other is close to the same as well. Expenses, you can see administration looks up again. That's, I believe, again related to how it's being booked. That is not correct. I'll have to circle back on that one. The last month when that happened, there was a booking error, so this could be the result of that booking error just being corrected. That's why this month looks so high. I apologize, I should have been prepared to answer that question, but that does look very high to me. So I'll go back and circle back on that one. Provider network is up, which we would expect, given we have increased the direct care wage funding for fiscal year 22, both from the state and from our own increases, as well as some of the clinical staff salaries have been increased as well. We should start to see catching up happening from the earlier months of this. It's a little time for new fee schedules and things like that to get in place, so we should see those things start to catch up. Grants, a little bit down, that's just related to timing for the most part when it comes to grants, and then all others roughly flat. So again, this one is November over November, so you can see total revenue is up a bit, total expenses are also up a bit. As I mentioned, we would expect that, and so net income does show slightly down comparatively. So here are our top 15 providers paid in this month, and the amounts each of them were paid. With that, I can take questions on financials?
I don't see any questions in the room. Okay. Hearing none, we will continue on. So it looks like the next order business is a few budget amendments that are seeking committee approval, business ops committee approval, in order to move to the general board meeting. So Anya, if you would like to get started with talking about the first one?
Yep. So this is budget amendment, oh, can you go back one? Can we hop back one slide? Oh, okay, maybe the order is a little off. So I'd like to see the revenue portion.
Excellent.
Yeah, let's go with that one for now. That's expenses, so I'll actually go one more.
Back one. Back.
So this is expenses, that's the one I want right there. So budget amendment one has some adjustments to revenue. So you can see, we started the year with roughly $365 million in Medicaid revenue. We're adding another $13 million, 13.4 million, primarily from Healthy Michigan. So again, with that eligibility trend continuing the way it has been, we do expect the Healthy Michigan revenue to continue to go up, so we're adding about $13 million there. And then the COVID premium pay is really just the difference between, we budgeted the 225, I believe this is just the difference of the 225 and the 235 that was actually approved. State general fund, you can see, has gone down. This is the, I think the remainder, this should be it as far as the redistribution across the state of the general fund, so this should be our bottom floor of general fund revenue at 10.8. So we will be seeing that reduction in fiscal year 22. Going down just slightly, you can see grant revenue is being increased. That's actually a net of a couple of things. So we had some that expired, but we also did get word, we received the grant for the Children's Crisis Unit, so the net of those two things is adding that $500,000. The other adjustment you see here, which is pretty significant, is related to CCBHC revenue. When we initially booked the revenue amount for that, it was really based on a guesstimate on how many people would be served, but now that we have the actual rates in hand, it's going to be pretty high comparatively. And that's because the state does a prefund that really is for almost all of the number of people that are eligible, not necessarily all that are served. So we will get funded for that portion, and then if those individuals are not served, we will have to send that money back. So that takes us to a total revenue of about $339 million. And now, I'm not sure which way you go to get to expenses, but that's the next slide underneath. Yep, that one, thank you. So you can see the slight adjustment in administration, that's specifically for that elevator repair that was approved by the board a couple of months back, might have been last month, I can't quite remember, and a phone expense that was missed in the original budget draft. Other program expenses that are increasing, one is ABA providers. We are planning to add several ABA providers in fiscal year 22. In addition to that, some of these other smaller adjustments are related to us adjusting salaries for master's level clinicians. You can see on the grant line, we did have an increase related to that Children's Crisis Grant and a couple of other smaller grants that we received. Local match drawdown expense is being reduced, and that's because they're fading that out. And what that is, is the historical amount of local funds we've sent up to the state to draw down additional Medicaid filings. So that is being reduced and hopefully eventually eliminated, which does then free up that local money for our use at the local level here. Both vocational and residential, you see those adjustments are related to not only the direct care wage increase adjustments, but also the pilot we have funded and the continuation of the cost reimbursed contracts. The large adjustment there for CCBHC really just matches the increase in revenue. It's slightly less than the revenue amount because we are allowed to keep a small amount for our administration. So with that, that's about a $23 million adjustment to expenses, adjusting our total in net assets by about $18.7 million. So now, if I can have that fund source summary document? Yep, that one, thank you. So this one kind of groups the fund sources by the ones that can be commingled versus can't be. And so the top section here is the Medicaid fund sources that you can see some have excess revenue, some have deficits. All in all, we end up with Medicaid surplus of about $15.3 million, a local surplus of about $1.3 million, a PA2 surplus of about $2 million for the total of that $18,750 in total. With that, I will take questions, and I see one in the chat, but I can't see what it is.
This is from Hottus Bernard.
I'm going to defer to K'wana on that because we can't have board member participation at remote.
Hi, this is K'wana, Chief Legal Officer. If there is a comment, someone wants to ask the comment themselves who are actually present, members who are not present cannot participate in discussion of the meetings as required under the OMA. So if there is a board member present who wants to pose the question, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I can pose that question. It's just for clarification on the Children's Crisis Unit grant. Was it for $5 million or $500,000?
The Children's Crisis Grant was for $5 million, but it was over two years. So we have it only booked for this fiscal year right now. So next fiscal year, we'll also have an amount booked for that as well. So that's why it's not the full amount this year, it's because it's a two-year grant.
Got it, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion from board members? Okay, seeing no others. We do, the business ops committee does need to vote as to whether to move this item to the general board meeting for a vote on approval. So can I get a, if there's no other discussion, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Can I get a second? Just for reference, our business ops members are Ms. Bernard, Mr. Furman, myself, Mr. Cowan, and Mr. Torres.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, and so do we need to do a roll call vote for that?
Of all board members present of your committee.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
And myself, that would be yes. Okay, so that motion carries, so we will bring that up to the general board for a full review of the board. Okay, and Anya, I believe you have another? Or was that it?
I think that's it for me. I think possibly Patrick is going to handle this one.
Oh, yes, okay. So now we just have a couple contractual obligations that need to be reviewed. The first one is for MEI, the Total Elevator Solutions Contract for Elevator Maintenance. Mr. Franklin?
Okay, I'm presenting the elevator contract for contract extension. Michigan Elevator Incorporated currently holds the contract for preventive maintenance, and Michigan Elevator, they worked with our general contractors during the renovation of this building, and they were our original contractor from day one. We're asking for extension of this contract for $200, I'm sorry, $25,000 per year for the year 2022, 2023, and 2024 for three-year contract extension. The board approved, the one car in the elevator out of the three was down at the pre, when we first initially moved into the building, and we got expert board permission back in October, and it was approved for us to renovate or to fix the broken elevator, and we replaced the hydraulic shaft that was broken, and it's ready for operation, pending safety inspection from the state. And so we're asking for this contract extension to the amount of $185,000, $172. The repair has been completed and is waiting for state inspection, and the annual maintenance PM and not to exceed contract is $25,000 per year.
Okay, are there any board member comments or questions about this contract? Okay, so same thing, business ops committee, we just need to vote as to whether to move this to the general board meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Take that to the roll call vote. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, that motion carries, and then we just have a couple additional approval items. The next one is for the MCMI HVAC service contract, and I believe Ms. Ali might be presenting on that one?
Yes, good afternoon or good evening, everyone. I am seeking approval of the board or for this committee to move to full board's approval for a three-year contract extension. This is for our HVAC system. We maintain a contract currently for maintenance and annual repairs that are to be anticipated throughout the course of the contract, which we are seeking a three-year approval of. That would make the existing not to exceed amount equal to $212,000 because we will be adding the additional $69,000 that we're seeking the approval for the three-year term will be added to the existing contract. This was previously determined that this particular organization or vendor is the only one in Michigan that can service our actual HVAC system, so that's why we decided to continue in the contract with this particular vendor as they are, excuse me, authorized reseller or dealer of our actual system. I'm prepared to take any questions on the request at this time.
I do not see any board member questions. Do we have a motion to move this to the general board?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Do I have a second?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Okay, roll call. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Okay, and myself, yes. Okay, and then we have a couple advertising contracts to go over. Christine is going to talk about a WDIV contract and a Scripps Detroit contract.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year. I am asking for approval for two contracts, contract renewal for television advertisement. They are separate contracts, but they do total more than $100,000 for the same purpose. The first contract is for WDIV, contract amount for three years is $153,000. Do they need to vote on them separately, Shiva? Okay. And the purpose is to increase awareness about OCHN. The television advertisements are an important part of our overall marketing and public awareness initiatives throughout the year. Are there any questions?
Mr. Cowan?
It didn't say how many advertisements that will be done in a year. Do you have a ballpark or?
Yeah, so that particular contract is for 160 spots. The average length of those spots is about 15 seconds, and then the impression amount, I believe, for Channel 4 was 50,000. So, and we also get a display ad on their local for click on Detroit advertisements. So there's some other additions to the contract beyond the television commercials themselves.
Okay, and obviously, on a related matter, we're responsible for all the production of any kind of advertisement?
Yeah, they do the production piece for us. Dana and I have talked about converting to live spokespersons appearing in the advertisements, so we will be revamping some of the content.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, just one thing.
Sure.
Because I won't ask the same questions. Which channel is Scripps?
Scripps is Channel 7.
That's what I thought, okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
You're welcome. I did have a question too. Any of the advertisements that they make for us, does OCHN then own them, so are you able to like rebroadcast or utilize them in other ways other than through WDIV afterwards?
Yes, we keep them on our YouTube channels, and we keep them on our website, and we also share them on our social media sites.
Any other board member comments or questions? Yes.
Hello? Did we collect data somehow when we got new clients in the last year to show if they heard about us from TV?
Yeah, we actually reported a little bit on that in October. So what we monitor during those timeframes usually it's the month after where you will see an increase. So we watch for additional clicks on our website, and then how that translates to calls and access, and then we can actually follow through in the data right down to if they come to our website, it's very specific service that people clicked on more than others. So we do monitor the relationship between any awareness campaign, not even just the television advertisement, and then the outcomes and really calls into access and clicks to the websites are our best gauge for increased involvement by the community.
Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments from board members. So from business ops, do I have a motion to move this item to the board meeting for?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Furman.
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Christine, if you'd like to talk about the Scripps one?
So the Scripps one, a little different, the amount is similar, it's 50,000, I'm sorry, 51,000 per year. And then we also with that get advertisement on bounce and Channel 20. So there are some unique factors to this particular one. They also have an online video service that targets Oakland County specifically. So if people are clicking on their website and they're sharing information, it's very similar to display ads on a telephone, that when you research something, you look at something, an ad will pop up that's similar to what Channel 7 does.
Christine, if you could just clarify, I see on the, the slides, it's showing 51?
Yeah, I was just looking at that.
But yeah, the actual action request form shows 50 per year, so is it just the 50 per year?
It is just the 50.
Okay, so it's actually a little less than what previous contract was.
It is actually a little less, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member questions or comments? Okay, I'm actually going to give Mr. Torres, who just walked in, a minute to come in and get caught up because he is on business ops, so I want to give him an opportunity to vote We were just reviewing the Scripps television advertising contract renewal, and this is just to discuss whether we will vote to move this for full board approval at the general board meeting next, or in two weeks?
And we do receive 110 spots with this particular advertisement contract.
Okay, great, thank you. And do I have a motion to move this to the general board meeting for a vote next week?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan, Mr. Furman. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, one last, looks like one last item for business ops, and that's the PIHP contract amendment number two that Ms. Ali will report on.
Good evening again. So for this particular amendment, it should be amendment number four, so that's a typo. This is the fourth amendment installment to this particular agreement. This agreement reviews several of the changes that had been negotiated amongst the PIHPs in the department throughout the course of several months over the year, and they include changes that are more policy-related. There were no financial terms per se that were impacted in this particular amendment in terms of dollar amounts. These were all negotiated policy updates for programs and services and anything that was related to compliance as it relates to our obligations to comply with the CFR and Medicaid-related requirements. One thing of note is that with the opioid health homes that are in the CCBHCs, those were included in this particular amendment, which obligate OCHN to just comply with the CCBHP, I mean CCBHC, excuse me, program requirements, as well as I believe the opioid health homes are now, the paper performance portion of that particular part of the contract will be considered restricted funding. I think those are the most, some of the most notable changes to this particular amendment, but also understanding that there will be additional changes to this amendment as well going forward as we continue to revise and review some of the policies. And I will note that some of the changes in this particular amendment that were negotiated are not present in this particular version, but we expect that the department will be issuing another amendment to the agreement, given that many of the PIHPs have already gone for with having this particular document executed. So at this point, I'm seeking your approval to move forward with this amendment, and we'll entertain any questions at this time.
Dr. Hans?
Will there any additional budgeting be required for these changes to the contract or any staffing increases, or will there be any impact?
So at this time, I think that all of the considerations related to any budgetary impacts have been noted by Ms. Eliason, as well as anyone from our clinical or program team. So we will continue to make adjustments as we continue to work through the compliance portion of this, and those changes will be noted in any upcoming or future budget amendment requests. But at this time, I believe that any changes resulting from this agreement have been accounted for by our team.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't believe I see any other board member questions. And just to make sure, this is just another, this is still business ops, moving it to, voting to move it to the general board discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to move this amendment to the general board?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Okay, myself, yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ali. Okay, so we're going to move on to policy management. So we've got Vicki Suter, who's going to give the recipient rights annual report for fiscal year 21.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity and your commitment to rights for the folks that we serve. I did send you the full report. I did send you the full report that we sent into the state in December. I am not going to go over page by page of the report, but certainly if you have any questions about that report, I'm happy to answer those. Additionally, Jean Futter is joining me online. She will also be presenting this evening with me as well. What we're looking to do in today's presentation is to highlight some of the important data that was reported to the state for Fiscal Year 21. Next slide. This particular slide shows the number of allegations, interventions and investigations that we participated or did in Fiscal Year 21. We had eight hundred and sixty allegations. Of those allegations, we investigated seven hundred and seventy-nine, which is a ninety-one percent of the allegations were investigated. Of those investigated, two hundred and ninety-one investigations were substantiated, which gives us a thirty-seven percent substantiation rate of those that we investigated. You will find this information on the first page of the report that was sent to you. Next slide. This just gives you some idea how our activities for Fiscal Year 21 compare to previous years. So we're looking at five years. It's very similar to the past four, five years with the number of investigations that we did, as well as our substantiation, the number of substantiations. Next slide. And this just gives you some idea for our substantiation rate, what is, how does that compare across the state? And we don't have Fiscal Year 21 data yet from the state report. However, if you look at the past years, we're very similar or close to what the substantiation rate was for CMH ORRs across the state. Any questions on that information so far? Okay, Jean's going to cover the next few slides.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Thanks for having us tonight. This slide shows the complaint source during Fiscal Year 21 for all of our investigations and allegations that were made. As you can see, the ORR, as well as guardians, staff and persons served, were the largest groups. When it says that the ORR is a complaint source, these are the folks that filed, the individuals that filed allegations of complaints. The ORR gets a lot of their complaints from incident reports and from licensing and from protective services. So that's why ORR is there at thirty. But as you can see, comparison to Fiscal Year 20, the rates are fairly similar across the board. Do we have the next slide, please? So our timeframes for completing investigations, from the time that they are received and opened until the time that they are mailed out, we have ninety days to do that within the ORR processes. As you can see in here, we have had no overdue reports this past year. We very much appreciate all the diligence of our rights specialists and getting their work done. They do high quality work and turn in high quality reports. So we are, right now, we still are getting a lot of reports in between sixty and ninety days. However, if I could have the next slide. We have a departmental goal of trying to reduce the amount of time that it takes us to complete investigations and get them back to the complainant, get them to the provider and get things tied up. Our current goal is getting them in within seventy-five days, not ninety. And so this graph or this slide demonstrates that we are at sixty-two point three nine days as of this fiscal year, which is still well below our seventy-five day departmental goal. And the way we are, the reason that we are doing this is because we want to really be responsive to individuals who file complaints and the people that we serve and making sure that any issues or concerns that they have are being addressed. So we are well within the seventy-five days range and I'm hoping that that's going to continue on. Could we have the next slide, please? Vicki, back to you.
Jonathan has a question.
Oh, I can't see them. Go ahead.
Hey Jean, I know that's our goal and I know we have to get it under ninety days. Do we have any that have happened that take more than ninety days?
If you go back to the previous slide from this one, you'll see that in the greater than ninety days, we had none last year.
Alright, so we are on track for a great year. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Alright, regarding appeals, there's three reasons a person can appeal an investigation. And only the complainant, the individual served guardian or parent of a minor can file an appeal regarding an investigation. Three reasons somebody can appeal. Either they believe that the investigative findings are not consistent with facts or laws, rules, policies or guidelines. Number two, the action taken or the plan of action proposed regarding the remedial actions, they do not feel that is adequate. And the third would be because they don't believe that the investigation was done timely. So we had eight appeals in Fiscal Year 21. In Fiscal Year 20, we had five, so we had a few more than we did the previous year. Of those eight appeals, all eight of them were appealed regarding the investigation not consistent with facts, laws, rules, policies or guidelines. And also one of those appeals, they appealed also the remedial action. As it shows, seven of those appeals were upheld. One went back for reinvestigation. The reinvestigation did not result in any change in the substantiated or not substantiated decision. We did have three, so we have a local appeal group. Three of our RAC members are a part of that and then we have some other individuals that are part of that. So when someone appeals, it first comes to the local appeal group. And they do their review and we send out letters and let them know the results of that. The individual then does have a right to a second level appeal only for investigative findings that are not consistent with facts, rules, policies or laws. And MDHHS does those second level appeals. The individual has to send that information to MDHHS. They typically will ask us for our investigative records so that they can review. Three of those did go to the state level. All three of those, the MDHHS did find that our local appeal recommendations, decisions were correct. So there was no changes for those. Any questions about appeals?
My question is not about the appeal, but your presentation prior to that. Do we know how many of these complaints were filed by individuals or families, guardians or the care providers? Because I think care providers are also a source of filing a complaint. Is that correct?
Yes, they are. If we go back, it shows that guardians and families were sixteen percent of the individuals who filed the complaint. We have nine percent that was the general community. Persons served were sixteen percent staff members. So staff throughout the provider network was twenty-three percent. So yes, a variety of folks. Thanks for asking. Okay, next slide.
So moving on to talk about remedial actions. Anytime an investigation results in a substantiation, the provider providing that service is expected to provide a remedial action plan. I'm getting a lot of feedback, are you guys hearing that?
No.
Okay, then I will keep going. So basically, because OCHN is not the employer of record, we do not dictate what type of remedial action needs to happen for a substantiation. However, in cases of abuse or neglect or retaliation, the Department of Health and Human Services ORR, per the Mental Health Code, does require that the employer or the provider has to either terminate, suspend, demote, provide a written reprimand or something of that nature. So when we're looking at very specific substantiations, abuse, neglect, retaliation, there, there is some expectation of what the remedial action, what are you going to do to one, prevent that this type of thing doesn't happen again and two, that it doesn't happen again in the future. So what you have on this slide are all the different remedial actions based on the allegations that were investigated and found substantiated in terms of what type of remedial action took place. And as you can see, a lot of folks, a lot of individual staff members got written reprimands. A whole bunch of folks got training, additional training. We also had some employment terminations that are in the higher range. And under our other category, those types of things that don't fall within the MDHHS tracking system, they include things like meetings with OCHN, guardian consultations, guardianship, guardian meetings, employee mentorship, reimbursement of property or funds. So those are some of the items that come under the other category. So this is our total of all remediation plans and remediation activities that we received from the providers in response to substantiated rights complaints. So if we could go on to the next slide. Alright, so who did these remedial actions then affect? Alright, so we had a distribution, you know, with persons with developmental disabilities. They were, they were on the receiving end of, or the, not the receiving end, they were the beneficiary of remedial actions in fifty-five percent of the cases. We certainly have quite a number of people with adults with mental illness, debilitating waivers, children with SED. But by far, most of our substantiations have to do with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, which makes this graph pretty understandable from my perspective. Alright, that they will be getting, having the most remedial actions directed towards them. Do we have the next slide, please? We also track provider types. Alright, what types of providers are getting substantiated and who have to write remedial actions. Right, so this is the root source of the remedial actions. So we can see that the residential system for both MI and development, people with developmental disabilities had the highest number. Alright. And SIPs, which are basically individualized homes, unlicensed, operated by providers, was up there also. And under the other category, people sometimes ask me, well, what's, what does, you know, what does that entail? Well, basically, it is individuals who live in private apartments, individuals under self-determination. The autism providers are captured within this group too. The reason they're categorized in this report under other is because MDHHS does not track it separately. Alright, so we've got remedial action total, remedial action based on population served and remedial action based on provider type. So moving on from there, we did see that training was a lot of, had a lot of part of remedial action. But we provide training just in general. Alright, we do a lot of training and thank you to our wonderful training department who coordinates all of that on behalf of the ORR. You can see that we had a lot of, a lot of training. Eight thousand five hundred plus people were trained. The video face-to-face, that is our new higher rights training, which is done live, virtual. So over the course of the year, we had contracted staff, and that includes OCHN by the way, OCHN staff, five hundred, five thousand one hundred and ninety-one staff participated in new higher rights training. The computer and face-to-face is a collection of a number of other trainings that we do. The largest being that we do annual update training online. So individuals have to log in, they complete the training, take a test online. But we also have some other wonderful trainings that are embedded within that particular number. And that includes, we did our dignity and respect, alright, and our Just Tell Someone trainings that are offered by our peer trainers. Two individuals serve directly at their site of service. It could be in their home or in one of the provider, vocational providers. Alright, we offered a few specialty trainings this past year on rights for guardians. And it wasn't about guardianship rights, it's about helping guardians understand the rights system. And we're planning on redoing all of those again during this coming fiscal year. So any questions about that up to this point? Alright. I'm going to turn it back over to Vicki then.
Yep, next slide. So now we're going to talk about outcomes in Fiscal Year 21. We had developed goals that were reported on our Fiscal Year 20 annual report. As Jean had mentioned, educating the community about the rights system. We accomplished that, as Jean had mentioned, she had developed and did three trainings to guardians so that they understood the rights of the person that we serve that they have guardianship with. The second was to obtain education on guardianship and support decision-making for our RAC members. We did accomplish that as well. The RAC members were invited to the Supported Decision Making Training Series, which we had ten months of various topics of training regarding supported decision-making. And in August of 2021, the RAC member also discussed ways that they could have positive influence regarding the supported decision-making at their particular meeting. The third was provide training presentations to educate the RAC members about a variety of issues. We had training on jail diversion and police training. Guardianship, conservatorship and probate court by Mr. Torres. Mental health first aid, site visit audit tool by our quality management team. And then also some basics about Medicaid. Next slide. So our work group did develop outcomes for Fiscal Year 22, which includes develop a plan and implement for mentoring. We've already begun this. We have been working with Mark Friedman from Beyond Tokenism to ensure that we're supporting our members of the RAC committee in a way that best works for them. We have a meeting coming up on Wednesday to help develop our mentoring plan for our RAC group. We're very excited about that. And then highlight RAC members and rights staff at the meetings. We're working on how we might do that. And then discuss how stigma affects a person when engaging in the rights system and determine action steps that we might be able to take. There was, you know, good discussion about sometimes people are concerned about engaging in the rights system and they may experience some stigma related to that, like, you know, that person's lying or they're not competent enough to really tell what's going on and things of that nature. So the work group really wants to take a look at that. And then lastly, the recommendations to the board is to provide the necessary support to the rights office, review our reports periodically and then also consider some rights-related topics at board study sessions. And that concludes our report, any questions?
Dr. Hans?
I don't have any question, but I want to make a comment about your series on supported decision-making. I did attend a couple of those sessions. Excellent, excellent presentations. I think it's a well-kept secret. If it can be disseminated into the community, I think it will be very, very helpful to our people. So I congratulate you on doing that series. If it is available online to go through, I'm sure we could still benefit from it. But I congratulate you.
Thank you. Yeah, all ten sessions are on our website and we're working on our plan for this year for training sessions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Thank you for the presentation, Vicki and Jean. It was very good. We used to do a rights training specifically to the board. And we haven't done it in a while. Is that something that's on the books or no?
I don't know if the board has that on there.
I can answer that. Your rights training is in DoShable. We did have a study session for all board members to complete all the trainings that are in DoShable. If you need a refresher, just let me know, I can help you. If you need a refresher, just let me know, I can help you.
Thank you.
Ms. Root?
This is more for Sheila, but do we have any room in the year, maybe in a study session to include the mentorship topic? Because that presentation we recently had in the RAC committee was just amazing, and I feel like it would be so beneficial for us.
Yeah, I believe it might be on there, but if not, I can check and see if I can slide in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to other business. First is Ms. Lesenby to talk about the Oxford High School crisis response.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I just wanted to just briefly take a minute to talk about the COVID and how it's impacting our residential, members who live in specialized residential, and the number of testing that's being done, as well as those increases of people testing positive. So in, in reporting this, I just want to make sure that you're aware that we're looking at that. Dr. Posios and I actually are talking about ways to get the booster in the residential setting. What the state originally did is that they were in support of vendors that were going out to the homes and providing the first and second vaccine shots. But as of today, when I had our meeting with the state, they're not doing that for the booster. So with these numbers, I talked with Dr. Posios, and our plan is to really look at how we can get the booster out into the residential setting, because we do see the increases in numbers. So for example, in, in December, we had 209 people, I'm sorry, 227 people tested and 18 tested positive. So 209 were negative, which was good, but 18 of those individuals were positive. And then, and just in January, as of the 10th today, we had a report that there were 143 people tested, and 11 people have already tested positive. So we're really paying attention to that and making sure there's access to that booster. So I just wanted to put that in there before I went into the Oxford. And if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to respond to those. So the next thing I wanted to go over is the Oxford and our response and involvement. Through a lot of collaboration with the Oakland County Health Department and the Board, the Oakland County Execs Office, we really worked together to make sure that the services and supports were available in Oxford schools. So from the very beginning, we actually had counselors that were volunteers from our provider community and our provider network, who made arrangements away from their providers to go to Oxford to provide those services, mostly in the schools. And as time progressed, we were asked to be present at the Legacy Center, which is a community, I believe it's like a go-kart fund center for children and families in the community. So we also participated in the supports and services there. What was interesting is that there was a, a big demand immediately to be at the Legacy Center, but as we made ourselves available, we realized that there was a balance. And more of the balance came with providing those services actually in the schools, when the schools were open to those kids and those families. The other thing I wanted to talk about has to do with a survey that was done. And one of the things that we should really be proud about is that getting the information to families really did result in people feeling supported and getting information. So even if it was just information and referral of how to access services, families actually felt like they were supported and getting the information that they needed. So just to give you some idea of some of the questions, did you attend any community grief counseling sessions offered at schools or through the community partners? 67% of those people of a 763 responses said yes. So that's a good sign that people were really engaging in those services that we were providing. And we spent a lot of time working with the school, talking about the transition plan, how students were going to be welcomed back to the school, and how we would be present even today. So as we sort of phase out of our role, or not even our role, but our presence at the Legacy Center, we realized we'll continue to work with schools. And so one of the other great things about working with the schools and working with Oakland County Execs Office is that they actually did approve on their budget through ARP dollars for us to have school mental health navigators. So we're actively working now, our clinical team, to build out, we have the job descriptions, and we're getting ready to post, so we can actually have people who will be assigned to assist families and youth, and administrators and teachers in the school when they need help navigating the services and supports throughout our system. So, and I think one of the concerns was that people with private insurance would not have access to this benefit, and it's for all students in all schools. So we will continue to work with Oxford schools. I, I can't thank my team enough. They worked during the holidays, they did not miss a day. When we were requested to go and increase the number of people present, they actually did that as well. So any questions about that?
Dana, do you know how many, approximately how many encounters we've had in Oxford?
You know, it's, in Octo, I'm sorry, December, the 10th, we had over 1,000 interactions with families and children. I don't have the latest numbers, but just in that couple of weeks, we had seen 1,000 families and children.
And just to comment, I haven't heard a peep from the Medicaid health plans on Oxford, have you?
No, I have not.
So that might be good to point out when you're doing advocacy.
I already have. Thank you. I already have, yes. Now, we did have, I do want to acknowledge the urgent care surrounding Oxford. They actually did reach out and offer to help, but also they wanted to know how to help those families. So I think that's really important to acknowledge. This community really did come together to surround these families and the kids to make sure that they had the support that they needed. So that's all I have for that. And I'm, I'll try to get more accurate numbers about the number of encounters and families we touched during this timeframe. And I have one staff change announcement. We have Mr. Bernard Hooper, who is joining us as our Chief Corporate Compliance Officer. Mr. Hooper has extensive impressive experience in corporate compliance management. He holds a Juris Doctorate from the University of Michigan Law School, among other prestigious and academic achievements. As our CO, CO, probably just our Chief Corporate Compliance Officer, he'll provide independent and objective review and evaluation of compliance issues and concerns with the organization, and then help us really strengthen our compliance program. One of the important things to note is that Mr. Harper has, Hooper, sorry, has a dual reporting, and that means that he reports directly to me as a CEO, as well as this board, the board chair. So just to acknowledge that. And he started today, but he's not present today. End of my update.
Thank you, Ms. Lesenby. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we move on? Okay. So Christine is going to go over some community event updates, outreach and awareness information.
Hello again. I, it may look like this is a rerun, because it says December 2021, but so much happened between the last committee of the whole and this one. I thought it was important to review our activities. December and January are traditionally quiet months for our organization in terms of hosting and attending events. Most organizations use those months to plan for the upcoming events. We usually start hosting events in March, and then our events run through November. So moving forward, the next report, it'll say February, March, and then ongoing afterward. As Dana pointed out, we spent a lot of time in Oxford, as you can see by this report, really trying to be thoughtful and responsive to their needs. We try to work on a one week at a time. It helps everybody, I think, stay calm. It gives us an opportunity to see advancements and progress in the community, which we have. So most of the elementary and the middle schools opened, and then they closed. The district was closed over the holiday, however, that's the time we spent with Legacy. And the school district helped us promote those programs by sending emails to the families, letting them know that we were there.
Can you move the slide, please?
So good news, and I really want to close my report with good news. We were in the elementary schools for a week, and the principals let us know the kids seemed to doing, be doing well. I think it's a, really a true reflection of a safety net. They needed us there a little bit for security. They can do this on their own, but in light of the events, just knowing we're there was helpful in building confidence. After a week, they told us it was, they were okay. We are a phone call away if they need somebody. We then moved into the middle school. We were in the middle school all this, all of last week. On Thursday, they told us the middle, middle school students are doing well. That is really important to note, because many of our middle school students had siblings in the high schools and families in the high schools. So it gave us a sense of progress for those families. So after Thursday, we were told Friday would be our last day. The high school students do start back tomorrow. They will be starting at the middle school. We will have a presence there. And we've discussed with the school superintendents what those needs look like. Dana and other leader, members of our leadership attend weekly meetings with community members. We speak almost daily with the school. They will be going back to the high school on the 24th. Next week, they'll have a open house for, first for staff, then for first responders who responded the day of the incident, and then they will have two open houses for parents and students. So I am hopeful. I think we have come a long way, and the community has come a long way, and we're very committed in helping them when, when, early on, they said, you know, don't let this define you, in ensuring that our students feel supported and loved, and that they will move forward, as Dr. Posios has said. So lots of positive, good things, and you should be tremendously proud of our network. They have, I think, extraordinary. Like, I, I've been in this field a long time, I've seen a lot of different crisis situations, but the unity in our network, and, and I think Dana really helped position us in that role from the beginning, has been extraordinary to this. That's all I have.
Christine, when is that Board of Commissioners meeting? I know it's on the 20th, but do you know what time?
Is it the morning meeting, Dana?
It's in the evening. It's at six.
Evening one?
I believe it's at six o'clock.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make sure I post that on Boardable so that you have the times of those meetings.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
I had a quick question. Looking at the, the last slide in the presentation, the outreach and awareness. So the staff professional development days, so they're training for staff, or how, what does that look like?
They're training for staff at the high school. So those are high school staff members. They really needed, and we are providers and our clinicians here in terms of language that you use, things to be aware of, not just physical or emotional reactions and responses, but physical, so helping them feel prepared in the transition moving forward. Based on the recommendation of our network and our clinicians, they did contract with a Dr. Jim Henry, who is renowned for his expertise in crisis rebuilding and response. He is leading the initiative now, and then we are supporting whatever efforts he puts in place. So the, the staff training and professional developments are part of his programming. And really to ask the staff, what do they need? And they will indicate and they will ask us if they need clinicians. There are certain groups that may need additional support. They're going to help determine very early on level of care and need, based on closeness to someone who may have been a victim, space in the high school. So they have a whole system in place to ensure that they're capturing all data and then determining levels of care for each one of those groups.
Thank you, Christine. There are no other board member comments or questions. We'll move on. Next order of business is the second public comment opportunity.
There's no public comments online?
Thank you. Any board member comments?
On Senator Shurkey's bills, and my comments are directed to the board, not to Dana, because I know she's already doing this. I had a little back and forth with Alan Bolter. Some of the people that we were, thought were undecided, they didn't want to vote against Shurkey's bill because he's the leader, but they have now gone from undecided to no. But don't let up. This is the time people are saying, well, he doesn't have the votes in December, now he's got, I know of two that are, you know, definitely are knows that we didn't know about. So really, hit it hard now, and just reinforce them so they don't drift back the other way. And he'll, he may never have the votes, and we just have to worry about lame ducks. So I encourage everybody to, you can talk to Alan if you want, and he's got all sorts of talking points, which we've all received, but he'll send them all to you at once if you want them. And all, like, all the organizations that are against those bills, it's two pages, single-spaced, in two columns. So keep it up. And it was, we've been effective in the past, and we still can.
Mr. Torres?
Oh, okay. I, I just, a comment with regard to protocols on the COVID situation. I was wondering if maybe on Boardable or something that we could get clarification. There's just so many different scenarios, that I know every organization's doing things different, you know, with numbers are so high right now. So I just want to make sure we're complying with the protocols that we have with OCHN if we happen to be exposed, or then there's indirect exposure, the CDC guidelines, and vaccinated versus unvaccinated. But just so that we as board members know, we should not be coming to a board meeting if, you know, we've been exposed, anything to that respect, so that we're following the right protocol. So, thank you.
Two things. One, on that same topic, if you, if you are COVID-related, you need to take an absence, let us know that is an excused absence versus just no showing. As well, continue to use the Boardable and remind, you know, to do the RSVP on the meeting that you're attending. Okay? But again, gotta keep doing that, so that we can make sure we have enough space and we're all set up for everyone who's going to be attending. The last thing I wanted to say is, you probably see it in your emails, but the, the Winter Conference, which happens in about a month from now in February, is only going to be virtual this year. It was going to be a hybrid, so some people could be there, some could be online. Now it's just going to be virtual. Go ahead, Sheila.
If everybody can let me know by the, by Friday, if they plan to attend, I know it's a $350 attendance fee for virtual, I can send out the flyer, and then we can get you registered. So just let me know.
But look through the agenda, see if it's of interest, where you'll actively want to be involved. Again, it's sort of hard, because it's virtual, but we've had other virtual conferences before. So take a look, check your calendar, and then what, Sheila?
Any other board member comments? Mr. Furman?
Yes. I'd just like to thank the staff for the presentations today. And again, I know a lot of work goes into those, and they are always very informative, so thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I think we are to adjournment. So can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Newman.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Does this one need a roll call, now that we're in person? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.